All right, guys, we'll go ahead and get started. I want to welcome Counselor Allen, who's part of the Finance Committee, and Counselor Hurst, thank you for joining us. And to the Finance Team, Pat Burns, Lindsay Hackett, Melanie McCoby. Thank you all for joining. Wait, I could turn on my camera. And thank you, Jerry, Lisa, Sandy, Kathy, for joining in as well. So we will start with the, hold on, I gotta get to the agenda, with the February Revenue versus Expenditure Report.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting the February Revenue versus Expenditure Report. It represents the first eight months of the fiscal year. Year-to-date, we've collected $541 million in revenue, which is 69% of the budget. Last year, at this time, we were at $507 million, and also at 69% of the budget. In the month of February, the major motor vehicle excise commitment was mailed to all those people that own cars in the city of Springfield and trucks. That totaled $9.7 million, and that was up approximately $600,000 from the FY21 Commitment Number One that was mailed a year ago in February. Terms of the expenditures, we're at $519 million, 7% of budget. The same period last year, we were at $462 million or 63% of budget. Last year, we delayed our last pension appropriation payment. And also, we had a large school transportation savings. That's why, in my estimations, the expenditures are up approximately 4% of budget compared to last year. We continue to monitor the gasoline expenses through February. They are up $232,000 in the general fund compared to this point last fiscal year. And also, the snow and ice budget, year-to-date through February, we spent approximately $1.3 million with a remaining balance of approximately $300,000 to get us through March and April. Hopefully, we don't have any more snow events in April.
Yeah. All right, I have a couple of questions. If you don't mind, Pat, I'm looking at the FY22 pension payment, and that's in school transportation, I guess. On the education line, that's up $43 million as an expense?
Yeah, and that pretty much, in my estimation, that goes back to the delay in the final three-month pension payment, and then also the large surplus we had last year in school transportation. So,
How much was that again? The surplus from last year?
I'm sorry?
How much was that surplus from last year again?
It was $14 million just in the school transportation budget.
So we kind of just put that back, or?
That was the big driver in our $27 million in free cash, that $14 million savings in school transportation. So it became part of this year's certified free cash.
And then we put it back as an expenditure?
Yeah, we've been consistently, we haven't had a disruption in school transportation this year. So we've just been paying the bills like a normal fiscal year, whereas the prior two fiscal years due to the pandemic, with children learning remotely, we didn't have those school expenses for transportation.
And we added back about $28 million to pension payment for FY22, for education side?
There's about, I believe, the last quarterly pension payment that was made last year was approximately $8 million. So that wouldn't show as an expense in '21, but in '22, we went back to our normal schedule, where we just paid the whole amount on July 1st. So the expense has been showed up from day one in '22, whereas in '21, at the beginning of the year, we were paying it monthly, and then we started paying it quarterly towards the end of the fiscal year after the Retirement Board allowed the city to do that, just because we were anticipating cash flow problems due to the pandemic.
So that's the same thing that happened on the city side, because it's about $16 million more?
Yes, we split that. The payment is 76% city and 24% school. So as that's made, it's split between the education line item gets charged 24%, and the pension infringe gets charged the 76%.
Thank you. The other question I have is on the revenue side. What is the IRS sinking fund payment?
Back when the Control Board was here, we took advantage of a, it was part of the federal aid package that allowed us to take a tax credit on debt issuances for school projects. So we had a school construction project, I think it was, I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact project. It was about $17 million. And every year, we're allowed to file with the IRS to get a tax credit, and it comes in two payments. And for fiscal year '21, we received three payments, because the IRS was late giving us our fiscal year '20 payment. It usually would come in late May, early June, but it came in, I believe, August of '21. So we had three payments that year. So it looks like we're behind in revenue, but we're really just back to our normal schedule now. We had that year with the three payments instead of the two, so.
Okay, thank you. And then my final question is, how come we only show the revised budget and not the original budget that was set in the beginning of FY22?
Good question. I've always done it this way. I can put the original budget in there also.
Okay. I just wanted to see how the budget changed from the original thought to the revised thought. So, but you could just send that to me. You don't have to change the format.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so any other questions from counselors? Because all the counselors, Tim, it's just me and you?
It's just me and you. Yeah, I don't have one. I don't have a burning question. Thanks, Pat, for that. If I do, I'll come up, I'll call you separately.
All right, thank you. And then we have the Law Department's Revenue Expenditure Report, or a Law Department Expenditure Report, I'm sorry.
Yes, this is the monthly report that I've been working with Lisa De Souza on, which shows the $5 million appropriation that was appropriated back in November. We've spent through February, $28,591,000. So it's leaving a balance from that original appropriation of approximately $4.4 million. And Attorney De Souza can talk about the particular expenses or answer any questions that you might have on any of the expenses listed. Looks like there was a settlement payment made in February for $262,000.
If I see that settlement payment. Attorney De Souza, can you just give us just a recap on that one?
This is one of the, one of the young men from Palmer.
Oh, from Palmer, okay.
That we had discussed. It was one of the cases that I had brought into executive session when we originally talked about this.
The Jean Libby, Liddy?
No, that's the lawyer. The checks get made out to the lawyer. Case is D.R. versus Greg Bigda et al. They were minors when suit was filed, so it was filed under initials.
Gotcha. And then there was a settlement in January for Jeremy Bellamy?
That was the lobby case?
Lobby, okay. The Central High School?
No.
Or Commerce?
Police Department. Police Lobby.
Police Department, okay. Everything else looks self-explanatory, so unless Counselor Allen has questions, I'm good with it.
No, I don't have questions. I just appreciate that we're doing this and that we can follow along. So thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Really, I'll pat. And that's a good thing, so.
Thank you for that, though. It's good to just have the details behind it.
Thanks.
Thank you. So the next item is the FY22 Shine Grant,
Yes, thank you, Sandy Federico. Tonight, I'll be presenting to council to accept a Shine Amendment in that amount. It is a one-time payment of that amount, and it's not reimbursable. The funds will be used in the areas for program supplies, office supplies, advertising, training, and contracting bilingual counselors, and anything else that we can, we have benchmarks that we have to follow that are dictated by the grant itself.
All right, that's good, that's good. Is it because COVID that the increase happened, or?
I don't know. They just announced that they had extra funds. It could possibly be because of that.
Okay, okay. Well, we'll take it, I guess. Counselor Allen?
Yeah, thanks, Counselor Whitfield. Yeah, Sandy, so the $79,000, this is additional money?
It is, in addition to the regular Shine Grant, yep.
And is it typical to get another little addition at this time, or was this unusual this year?
The first time we got it was last year, and so that was not typical last year. So we weren't definitely not expecting it again this year, but it did come, even though it stipulated that this is not going to be an annual thing. So as Counselor Whitfield mentioned, it probably could be due to the COVID situation.
Yep. And it comes from where?
E O E A.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And the next item is the HUD Continuum of Care Grant No Match,
Good afternoon. Hi, it's Jerry McCafferty. Hi, I'm bringing this to council tonight to accept these funds. HUD funds that are used to resolve homelessness. It is pass-through funding that goes through, goes to about 12 organizations in the community that provide either permanent supportive housing or rapid rehousing for people who have been experiencing homelessness. It's a combination of renewal funds and some new competitive funds, some new projects we're funding this year. One is a collaboration between the YWCA and Alianza to specifically support survivors of domestic violence. And another one is to create some housing that has onsite support staff services that is a collaboration between the Mental Health Association and Home City Housing, and is to serve homeless people with serious mental illnesses. So this is funding for the upcoming fiscal year.
So FY23?
The year that starts. The year that starts this July 1st.
What is HMIS?
It is the Homeless Management Information System. So one of the requirements of this grant is that all of the agencies that are funded under the grant must put data about their clients into a single database, and that is funding to support the database and staff to run it. And that is, there's a lot of reporting on this that goes back to HUD. So this allows for various types of reporting, that is, performance, how, you know, how we're doing, how long people stay in programs, you know, whether when they leave, they're going back to homelessness or to other permanent housing, and just a lot of reporting.
Okay, so there's a couple of initials that I don't know, and then I'll turn it over to you, Counselor, but RVCC?
River Valley Counseling Center.
UFA?
Our C O R, so our Continuum of Care has been designated as a Unified Funding Agency, a continuum, and that's what UFA stands for, Unified Funding Agency. So a Continuum of Care can work with all the grantees, and they all come together and submit their applications, and then HUD contracts individually with all of them. Or they can designate one entity to receive all the funds and manage all the grants. Get some extra funds, because we manage all the grants. So that is funds that comes to the city for the purpose of managing these grants.
Is it for staff? Staff, okay. And then, I think VOC?
Valley Opportunity Council.
And then?
I should say that the, right, this is, this grant is for all of Hampton County.
Okay. And then the last one is YHDP that I don't know.
So there's several grants under, there was a special initiative called the Youth Homelessness Demonstration Program, which was a competitive grant that we were awarded. So there are several entities that have funding under that grant. It's Gandara, the Center for Human Development, and the Mental Health Association. They, we did this planning process to get this additional money, and they're all to serve young people who are between 18 to 24 years old, who are homeless.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Counselor Whitfield. Yeah, Jerry, thanks for this. Two, just a couple of questions. Can this money, the 6.4 million, can it be used for, like, I won't say anything, but could it be used for, like, counseling, for job search, for housing itself? Is it kind of flexible in that sense, or?
No, it's actually very prescribed. So it is almost all, it is housing types of programs. So it is, there's, it can fund transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, rapid rehousing, which is up to two-years rental assistance. So it can fund those housing things with supportive services. And then the only other things it can fund are programs that are for the purpose of connecting people to housing. So this grant, there are other homeless grants that can serve other things, but this one is very housing-focused. Housing and services that are connected.
And since you're the, thank you, and since you're the person that this stuff seems to go through your department, do we ever get a, do you ever get, and this is maybe a bigger question than for this meeting, but do we ever find out how we're doing? It always seems like we have a ton of, you know, how are we doing? Is the homeless problem getting better, getting worse? That basic question. How do we discern?
Yes, we do a lot of tracking. The Continuum of Care is required to, and it has a separate Board of Directors that gets regular reports on how we're doing. Again, although, again, it is for the county, and so that's what I'm generally compiling data on and reporting. But there's a few measures. One is, we do an annual point-in-time count, how many people are homeless at a particular, on a particular night each year. And we also, we also, in this database, because of this database, we have years of data around homelessness, and we're able to see how many people are newly coming into homelessness, how many people we house every year. So I don't have it all in front of me, but we do have a lot of reports. A lot of data and a lot of information. One thing I can say, so we just did a point-in-time count at the end of February. We are, we have brought the numbers together in that we have a slight uptick in the number of people who were unsheltered on the night of the count. Last year, there was almost no one unsheltered. It was a very low number, because last year, we were able to use COVID relief funds to offer hotel rooms to virtually everyone who was on the streets. We still have some hotel room money, but we do not, we're not able to offer it. There's a maximum this year on the number of hotel beds we have. So there were, I think it's between 35 and 40 people who were unsheltered on the night of the count. It is better than, in Springfield, over the whole county, there were more, obviously. In Springfield, we have had, you know, we have, we house a lot of people direct from the street every year, and a lot of people with long-term homelessness every year. So our numbers are pretty, especially in Springfield itself, our numbers are much better than a lot of cities. Most, we don't have a lot of encampments, because we're usually offering those people hotel rooms and then housing. And we're getting, we're steadily moving people off the streets. So I would say we're doing okay. We're not doing great, because it's been a very difficult time, and there's more people coming into homelessness all the time, but we're about level.
So I'll just ask this one question, then I think it's probably for another meeting on this, which I think would be a good thing to do. But when you say encampments, do you mean what was happening in Boston with the mass incarceration a few months ago?
Yes, yes. I mean, and some people call anything an encampment, so one tent, they refer to as an encampment. So we generally think about it, right, as who's outside. Our numbers of people outside have remained fairly, fairly low.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to do a briefing at any time. Because we do have a lot of.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Is this an invitation-only type of application?
Um, no. The Continuum of Care, the board runs the process. It is a public, open to the public application. We announce it and advertise it, send it to, we put it on a blog that is for providers that work in the area of homelessness that has hundreds of followers throughout Western Mass, and including a lot in Springfield, and mail it or email it to sort of every provider that ever comes to a meeting. There's a competitive process that the COC does each fall. As I said, it's usually, there are a lot of renewals, because these are permanent housing projects. Most of them have people in them, so they need continued funding. But HUD generally makes sort of bonus funding available every year, and that's what we're generally looking for new applicants for. So when I said that the YWCA and Alianza have a very big project this year, that was a new, they competed to get it, and they were our top-scoring applicant this year.
But there is. Oh, yeah, because I see, sorry, Jerry.
There is a public process, yes.
Okay, because I see, like, MHA, they're getting almost a million dollars, and CHD as well. So I'm just wondering if, like, other organizations that work towards homelessness get the same opportunities to apply for the funding? And does this Continuum of Care application go on the city's website as well?
The application itself is, so the COC has, because it's a regional COC, it's the Hampton County, it has its own website, but it is posted publicly, yes, all portions of the application and the whole process.
And then the planning project, that also is funds that come to the city?
To the city, yes. It's often for consultants to do training and planning, and the things we have to do to get more money in the future, usually.
All right. Counselor Allen, is your hand up from before?
Oh, that's from before, yeah. I'll lower it.
All right, I did it. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Davila, for joining, and Counselor Hurst, for coming back. We're just going over the Continuum of Care Grant. Counselor Allen is requesting that we have a meeting to talk about it in more detail. So we'll do that at a Finance Committee meeting, but Jerry, thank you for the information you gave today. All right. The next one is the EOHS Youth Homelessness Grant Increase for $1,763,178.
Yes. This comes to the city also on behalf of the Continuum of Care, but this is state funding. The state, several years ago, asked each region of the Commonwealth, and they defined our region as Hampton County. They asked each region to apply for funds to address youth homelessness. So young people, 18 to 24 years old, and we applied. And each year, they amend our contract to give us additional funds. So this year, they have just, they have, in the middle of the year, they're adding, for this current year, $450,000. And in the next, and then they are renewing the grant for FY23 and FY...
Uh-oh, we lost this.
Taking care of several years at once. The additional funds for this year, I'm not sure if they're ARPA funds or if they're from the supplemental budget, but they are. The state had more money in this line item, so they made more money available to the existing grantees to add to their programs.
You kind of froze for a minute. So is it FY23 and FY24?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, any questions on this one? I remember I was on, like, this Youth Homelessness Initiative when I was part of HCC, and they would meet and talk about it. I wonder if this is the same group?
Possibly. The HCC has definitely been involved. We work with a lot, I mean, they're not funded under this, but they were part of the planning of it, as was STIC.
Okay, all right. Any questions?
No questions.
All right.
Thank you, Jerry.
The next one is the Annual Audit Plan.
I don't see Young here. I don't know if he knew this was on the Finance Subcommittee meeting.
I don't know if he did.
Yeah, so he may, he's going to be at the 7 o'clock, but I don't think he needs to come to this meeting.
Okay. All right, so we will skip that one. Miss Counselor Hurst wanted to add anything? All right, order authorized, okay.
I'm sorry, which one was this? Which one was this, Counselor? Was I supposed to be adding something?
No, it's the audit plan. I didn't know if you wanted to add something.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, good point. I'm sorry. My hope is that we'll send this to committee, and we'll have an audit Subcommittee meeting on this particular item. Typically, what has happened in the past is that we haven't brought it before the City Council for approval, and we haven't, and we haven't necessarily followed the proper protocol. And so the City Council ought to be approving the audit plan, and if we want to make any amendments to the audit plan, then we can do so by majority vote. But I, my thought is that we'll send it right to committee, we'll have a meeting, and then we'll bring it back before the City Council, once we know what the end result of that meeting is.
Yeah, because I would like to know how the process works a little bit better, as far as, like, how many hours we can use for things that we want audited. I would definitely like to know that process, so I think that's a good idea anyway.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And we'll talk about it in Subcommittee meeting, but, you know, if you read through the documents, I think he specifies a certain number of hours that can be utilized from, with either City Council requests or requests from the administration. And so I just don't know how that process actually works, and how, who can request what. I know what we've done in the past, but I'm not 100% sure that that will be the same protocol that we'll use moving forward. So definitely necessitates a Subcommittee meeting.
All right, Counselor Allen?
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Hurst, to bring this to the Audit Committee for review. And as he said that, I was just looking at the plan. It's 360 hours, or hours set aside to perform audits of unforeseen issues and requests by management, mayor, and our City Council. So we can talk about that there, but that's the number of hours that are in the plan, 300.
I just look to, what I don't agree with is that we're all lumped together. I think we should have our own hours, and the mayor should have his, and then whoever else should have his. Whoever else should have theirs, I don't like that lumping because it depends on who gets their request in first or which ones they decide to. Choose to audit is who will get the amount of those hours, so I don't necessarily agree with it being lumped together like that, but. Like you said, that's an audit committee, um.
I, I, I certainly will, will share your concerns, uh, at the audit committee, or maybe you can, uh, you know, I'll coordinate with you all in terms of time and. Hopefully, uh, hopefully you'll be able to make it.
I'm on that with you, well.
You're on, okay.
All right, thank you, Counselors, I'll try to be there, um, but if not, please, um, voice that concern.
Absolutely, I got you.
All right, thank you. Order authorizing contract over three years for lease purchase financing of school computers?
Hi, Counselor Whitfield, Lindsay, um, obviously, um, I was thinking, I was at the city council meeting. So Paul Foster isn't here, but he'll be at the seven o'clock, so this is the annual lease that they come to you with, it's a four-year lease to. Continue their one-to-one technology program over at the, um, Springfield Public Schools.
One-to-one?
Yeah, one child to one device.
Oh, okay, and, um, is this already budgeted?
Yes, in the school department's budget?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, all right, because it is seven million dollars, but it's important for each child to have a laptop and to have some because. My kids have broke a couple, and, uh, yeah. I don't know, it's like they eat the chargers.
I know. DJ woke up this morning, he said, and he went out to his porch and there was like a broken laptop from Forest Park Middle School on his front porch.
What?
Yeah, I don't know.
They're like, we just gonna leave this here, he's the finance guy.
Yeah, right, yeah.
All right, so that's a good, um, buy right there, but we'll talk about that at the, um, meeting, so. We are all done, guys, as usual, we are efficient and getting out of here before that hour is up, so. I appreciate you guys' time and thank you for all the explanations. And.
Thank you.
All right, great, thanks.
We call the meeting to an end.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good one.
Bye.